December 5th, 2019. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could everyone please stand for one more second? Dr. Gilligan would like to say a few words for a couple of special people who love us.
Yeah, so it's with a heavy heart, I think many of you know that just recently we lost a middle school teacher. Miss Deb Umbro, not Miss Deb Umbro. And Miss Umbro had taught for us in special education for over thirteen years. She was beloved at the middle school. And we are really were saddened and shocked by her passing. What I would like to say is she had a tremendous impact on kids. And I was tremendously proud of how the middle school staff, parents and kids over there handled the situation in a tough time. And then secondly, I'd like to have in that moment of silence, think about our colleagues in Peabody today. As tomorrow they have the funeral for the superintendent of schools, forty-four years old, Ms. Cara Mertag. As well as they lost a thirteen-year-old student in a bike accident last week. And their high school vice principal just recently passed unexpectedly. So there's been quite a bit of tragedy in Peabody. And our hearts and on behalf of North Andover will go out to them in just a moment of silence in their memory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Okay. First order of business tonight is public comment. Anyone from the audience? No, not right now? Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is recognition. North Andover Music Association Best Community for Music Education Award.
Yeah, well, can we welcome up Mr. Nelson? And if you could give us your last name again, I had it and...
My name's Natalie Kissel.
Yes.
And I am a vice president with the North Andover Music Association. And for the past couple of years, Chris Nelson has applied on behalf of the North Andover Public Schools for a recognition, which is the Best Communities for Music Education. And we have received this. And Chris is here today to sort of help receive this and also to tell us a little bit about what this recognition means, a little bit about the process by which he applied and we received it.
Sure. So a few years ago, I noticed that... I heard about this, the NAMM Foundation, which is a national association for music as a way to promote music education around the country. I've come up with this designation for best communities in music education based on various criteria that they have kind of set forth. I'm very close, I grew up in Wakefield, very close with the teachers in Wakefield. And I saw that they had received this and I kind of inquired about it. And essentially what it involves is filling out a pretty detailed survey about the music program in North Andover. A lot of it has to do with access to music education. Not necessarily just numbers of students involved, but the amount of time that they receive, they receive music, the different offerings that are available to them in the town. So after, you know, doing some digging and finding all the necessary information, I filled out the survey, which is, you know, some quantitative stuff, but also some open response questions that I filled out on behalf of the district. And for the past two years, we've received this designation. This year in Massachusetts, there were thirteen other districts that received this as well. And it's open to all schools throughout the country. So we're excited to see North Andover be recognized for this. I've been working, this is the start of my sixteenth year in North Andover, which I can't believe. But it's really, it's really a wonderful community that celebrates all types of achievement, not just academic, athletic, but also all the arts. And I think it's wonderful how we celebrate the whole child in the town. And I think this is just another way to kind of show the strength of the music program in North Andover. And obviously now there's pressure to continue to fill up that plaque, but I will happily continue to do that as we go. And I have no doubt that that will continue. So I really appreciate, I really appreciate the NAMA getting this plaque that can kind of be a physical representation of this designation.
Thank you very much. We all recognize what a great job the music program does in North Andover. And those of us who've been around for a long time have seen it grown. And it's just incredible what has transpired in this community. So I know you're taking, you're up here today to talk about it, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes that have helped along the years too.
Absolutely. It's a wonderful team of teachers to work with. And there's a chorus concert happening right now at the high school. Hundreds of kids singing on stage, there's a musical down the street that dances. It's really a great, great group of people to work with and great kids, so.
That's why no one's here tonight.
Too much going on. Small tryouts at the middle school, all sorts of things.
It's amazing. About nineteen ninety-eight, the high school principal made a commitment to growing the music program. And it took a while, but there were only maybe fifteen or sixteen people in the band. And a year and a half later, we were close to a hundred. And without NAMA and their support, because I was, oh, let's get some more band uniforms. I didn't realize that a band uniform's about seven or eight hundred dollars, might be more now. You guys have done an amazing job helping fund that with the instruments, the pieces. But I would say that I'm in a lot of events in this community. I feel like music is recognized as the top of the top. I can't tell you, and no offense to Coach Dobzinski or football, that band practice is harder than the football team. The hours they put in, in the heat and the cold and the parking lot when it's triple E. And just amazing group. And I was wondering before you go, if I could get a shot with you and the chair and the vice chair for the website? Okay. Congratulations.
So behind this, Stan, get a photo op.
Thank you very much.
So we thought, I think next, if there was someone in the central office, that this could be...
Okay, that would be great. And we do have additional numbers for future years, since we said we would commit to applying for in the future. Yeah, we thought it'd be great if we somewhere here in this building, because it's so many people in the community that work to achieve this. And Chris is the one who's been great about applying for it. But the fact that, you know, it really represents the community as a whole, it's nice to have it in a central location where people can come in and see it.
Well, let's face it, I mean, there's really no more of a high school.
Thank you very much.
It's a good for all of them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes that are in our packet for November fourteenth. Any motion on this?
Oh, who did the second minutes is presented in the packet?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Lynch, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion on them, any changes, edits? Everybody's comfortable with them? All of them, in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it, five zero. Thank you. Okay, student report, Jack, Emma and Mika, Mika, sorry, Mika. Okay.
Good evening, all of you. So as you know, the second trimester has started and with that comes new sports. So I believe winter sports season for everything began yesterday. Our fall sports season was capped off by a very disappointing loss at the Thanksgiving football game. It was quite a blowout. Also something of note with regard to winter sports. One of my coaches insisted that I tell you that the track team has a combined two hundred twenty-six students, which is about seventeen percent of the school's population. He did all the math, not me. But he's very proud of the accomplishment and wanted me to share that with you.
In addition to winter sports starting, the new trimester also started yesterday. So students, a lot of students had new classes and finished their previous fall trimester classes with finals the week before Thanksgiving on that Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And yeah, the new trimester started, it was delayed by a few days with the two snow days that were appreciated, I have to say, after Thanksgiving break. But yeah, so not much news there. But also DECA is going to be participating in the regional competition in, I believe it's December nineteenth. It's, so all the DECA students go to Merrimack College that day and participate in various categories in business. And that is one club that's like grown so much in the past few years. So many kids are a part of DECA. And something remarkable about it is so many students also advance to the state competition, which it requires that you place very highly at the regional competition, which it's a difficult task, but so many students from North Andover accomplish that. So we expect to hopefully see a lot of North Andover students make it to the state competition and advance through regionals. And then after that, there's the national competition for DECA. For those that don't know, DECA is like a business club at the high school or activity that Mr. Oberlander and Mr. Marfion are in charge of.
In regards to some upcoming events, especially in the music department, Coffee House was delayed due to a football game to December twentieth, so it'll be happening, I believe, in the cafeteria on that day. In addition, there is a chorus concert tonight as of ten minutes ago. And so all the chorus students will be performing as well. Student Council is continuing the tradition of Operation Donation, which is a fundraiser that they do during the holiday season in which each class, each first period of class is designated to raise money and then buy gifts for children in need during the holidays.
Yeah. And then the senior class also just wrapped up a fundraiser leading up to Thanksgiving, where we partnered with the Lazarus House. And the way it worked was any student in the senior class could send a link out to family members, friends, neighbors, whoever it may be. And that person could choose to donate in increments of sixteen dollars, with eight dollars going to the senior class and the other eight dollars going to donate a bag of soup to the Lazarus House during the holiday season. And it was really great, because tonight, the senior class officers, we went to the Lazarus House and delivered the soup that we had, that the whole senior class had raised on behalf of the senior class. And there was, there were so many boxes of soup. I think it was like four hundred, it was like four hundred bags in total that we accumulated. And we ended up benefiting from it, but it also benefited the Lazarus House. So that was a really awesome fundraiser that was successful in both ways for that. So we're really happy that we got to participate in that.
And also in terms of fundraisers, the junior class is having a babysitting fundraiser next Friday. So for any parents of younger small children, I know, Mr. Terese, you have younger children. We are hosting from six o'clock to nine o'clock next Friday, an event where we take children, we entertain them for several hours while parents go out on date night or to holiday parties or shopping for anything. It doesn't have to be decorating your man cave, maybe.
That went out the window a long time ago, even.
So we hope to raise a lot of money from that.
All right.
Any questions?
Do you take soft ones? As babysitters?
I actually wanted to ask one question.
Sure, go ahead.
We're going to be talking a minute later about the MAS, the Student Council Conference. Have any of you been on that before? Can you tell us a little bit about, if you have, what your experience is?
Yeah, so I think all three of us have actually attended this conference in the past. I attended it as a freshman, so four years ago. But it's basically a leadership conference put on by the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, which is like the entity that governs like all the student councils in the state. And student council, Mika maybe can talk about how it's divided up, because she has positions in that world, but...
So basically how it works is there are four regions, Northeast, Southeast, Central and Western Mass. I'm the vice president of Northeast. And how it works is essentially everybody gets together and we go through a lot of workshops and just developing leadership skills that can be implemented both in the schools that we return to as well as the community. And as well as like develop your individual leadership skills. So it's definitely really important, it's definitely really good and it benefits a lot of people in the community.
Like president or something last year? Yeah, she was the secretary of the Northeast region, I think so, so yeah. And we also, at one point, two years ago, we had the vice president of the state board, was a North Andover senior, yeah, Cole Masterson. So and then I think Mika's planning on...
You see that she's running for the state?
Running for state vice president.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Cole's attendance was less than...
Do the students prepare the workshops or do adults do that?
Yeah, so essentially everything is student run. So there's the state president, vice president and secretary, as well as all the regional presidents and four delegates from, or a delegate from each region who essentially put together the conferences and such. And there are advisors that supervise, but, and every workshop is run by students.
Yeah, it's a really amazing opportunity, especially an example of something that's come out of this conference was four years ago, when I attended, one of the students who went with me, she graduated last year, Bella Feng. She had a workshop about the like unified school, unified champion schools. And she was really inspired by that and went and helped to start the campaign with unified basketball and really got that going during that year and the year after. So that's something that directly came out of this conference. And there are so many other ideas that we're exposed to. And it's like a three-day event. And it's really fun for the kids that go, but we also get a lot out of it to bring back here too.
Sounds so good, I just, I thought it would be helpful since we're talking about to hear from you guys.
Yeah.
I can tell you that it was around thirty-something years ago and it's grown a lot.
Did you go thirty-something years ago too?
I was not.
That's great.
No, it's been around a long time.
That's excellent.
Fairly correctly, Jack, you missed the last minute.
Because you had to do a orientation at the middle school?
Yeah. So the, so student ambassadors and student council teamed up to run the, along with the administration, to run the eighth grade parent move-up night or eighth grade family move-up night, I'm not sure what the specific name was, but... Yeah, open, open, it was, yeah.
To showcase what North Andover has to offer.
Yeah.
Especially for anybody who might be considering other high schools for the options.
Exactly. And Mr. Jackson had a presentation about the offerings at the high school. And then after that, the parents or families that were in the audience had the opportunity to split off and have student-led tours of the high school. So I was running a tour group, going to all the various classrooms, the art wing, the gym, showing off all the facilities that we have to offer, talking about my experience. And we had probably like twenty, twenty-five other students who are also helping to run those tours. They were really successful. And also after the tours, the parents also got to go to the cafeteria, where we had set up every single sports team and a whole bunch of the clubs at the high school set up tables to show off all the activities and sports and the achievements in that realm of the high school. So it was a really great evening for especially parents at the middle school who are thinking, maybe send their kid to the high school, maybe go the private school route. But I think it really helped show off everything that North Andover High School has.
Well, thanks for doing that, Jack. I really appreciate that. Any other questions for students?
What time's the Coffee House on the twenty-two yet?
I believe it's seven.
Yeah, it tends to be, yeah.
It is amazing.
And the North Andover Music Association students will be selling tickets leading up to that for a discounted price, but then you can also purchase tickets at the door that night.
All right, no further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you. Okay, moving along the agenda, superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn this over to Executive Director Marcy Bucuzzi in a second. But I wanted to let you know that we have coming up, what used to be called the Coordinated Program Review, and that's probably how you're most familiar with it, where the state comes in from Mass DESE and they review three main areas with a lot of sub-indicators and indicators around civil rights, special education and English learners, formerly known as ELL students. So the last time they were in, we're about four years ago. And Bev, if it's not linked, we do have a handout for everyone tonight, just some basic information. We're not going to go through all, she's not going to go through all of it tonight with some highlights. But I would just say, before Marcy gets started too, that I would like to thank Mass DESE. You know, oftentimes they get the reputation of what the RMMV used to have, when you'd call, be on hold for certification, all these different things. I have to tell you, folks said that you could never get a Coordinated Program Review moved for any reason, not even a natural disaster. And last year I called up and I spoke with Tim Gallagher, who was a assistant head of the program. And I spoke with the director, Vani Restogee Kelly, who heads up the entire office for the old Coordinated Program Review, which is now called Tared Focus Monitoring. And with the change as a new superintendent, with the knee-ask self-study, with the change as a special education director, they kindly agreed to bump it out a year so that we'd have a fresh start with the people that were going to be on board to see this through. So without further ado, Ms. Bucuzzi. I tend to do that.
So the other great thing about it being pushed... The other great thing about it being pushed out a year, of course, is that it is, it's a new six-year program. So we're all starting at the same point. So I was lucky enough to go with my other Cohort A group members to Crest Collaborative a few weeks ago and met with Desi about, we are in the first stage of it, which is just the self-assessment stage. So for North Andover this year and the participants, it is just a lot of information gathering and a lot of uploading onto the Desi portal. So they give us criteria as far as special education students, as far as disability area, age, eligibility, lots of different criteria. Same thing around EL and civil rights. We upload that information into the Desi portal. And then, but before, I think it's May first is their cutoff date, which then it, that, after they go through that information, that sort of instructs them about how they come into the district the following year. So next year is the onsite monitoring. This year is really just us giving them all the information that they request. So we went to the first of three trainings for this year. So it's a new process for everybody and they are super helpful as far as doing some individualized training for the district. But the six-year cycle, the change from the three-year to the six-year cycle is beneficial for everybody because it just gave, it's giving districts a lot more time to implement any changes that the department was asking people to do. So I think it seems like a much cleaner and a much more directive and direct way of looking at our information and giving us feedback in order to make positive changes. So it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of paper pushing, but we'll get through it.
No, that's it.
Okay. Chair's reports, actually we have a vice chair's report today. Mr. Picard would like to give an update on Crest.
Sure, so I serve on the board of Crest as a representative from North Andover. Dr. Gilligan serves on the board of SEEM Collaborative. So we have students in both of those collaboratives. Not a whole lot of students, but we have a few students at Crest. And that's one of the obligations we have is to provide a board member. So I provided each of you, and linked for the public is the annual report from Crest and it has a little bit of information on each of the programs that they have, as well as their philosophy and all that jazz. Linked but not printed for you is the draft financial audit, which we did approve at the last board meeting. The law requires that we do an update of school committee quarterly. So this seemed like a good time to give you guys some information. Crest, for the first time since the law changed, has had above twenty-five percent retained earnings. We had twenty-six percent. And so the board decided at that point that we would turn back those savings to the districts. So Dr. Millie is aware that we're going to be offered a credit for the students that we had in the program last year. We'll get a percentage as a credit for future students that are at the Crest program. And that had to do with Crest had lower earnings last year, but they also had lower expenditures. So that was how we ended up with a little bit more in retained earnings. See if there's anything else that seems to be interesting. If you, if, you know, if you want to have the final financial audit, we can get that for you.
I saw it.
Is there anything else that I can tell you that would be helpful for you to know? Oh, the other big thing is that Crest has been in a multi-year process of trying to acquire new space, different space. Right now it's in two locations, both in Methuen, one on Branch Street and one on Broadway. The Broadway has gone out for RFP for purchase a couple of times. We've looked at a few different locations that seem like they would be able to meet our needs. And, you know, real estate's a little bit tricky and the way that the public process works for acquiring and selling. So we are continuing with that process and we are hopeful that we're going to be able to make an acquisition this year.
So Crest owns the place on Broadway?
Crest owns the place on Broadway and leases the place on Branch Street. There was an option at one point to buy on Branch Street and things changed. And so it's an ongoing, it's been an ongoing process for the last few years. In fact, Mr. Limpert was there when they started the process. So it's, you know, it's ongoing.
Okay. Thank you, Helen, for your service there. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's a great program, I think it's grown a lot. And I think there's a couple of years ago where it was a little unstable.
A little more unstable, but I feel like it's really kind of...
There was really a philosophical change about how they were going to be presenting and offering opportunities. In addition to direct services to students, they do professional development as well as transportation and some other services. So they really had to figure out and are continuing to figure out where the needs are and how they can meet those needs. So adult programming is the next thing that's really kind of coming online.
Question, so one other question.
Sure. Does this relate, or how does this even interact with what you just described, what you're going to be going through? Does it ever look at like who you're sending out to Crest and why?
Yeah, so one of the criteria that, you know, when they depart, the files that we have to pull through, you a certain amount of them have to be out of district. It all depends on the total amount, but they look at that as part of it too.
How those kids are being served and so on.
Yeah, private day, private, public, like so private day and public day they look at. So that's part of the criteria.
Great, thanks.
Okay, old business, strategic plan, update.
All right, great. So tonight, we got it linked. And I apologize for being linked late. Bev's diary, well, it was a well-earned vacation prior to Thanksgiving. Can't remember the last time she's been on one in many years. So good job, Bev, with self-care, I think that's something we could all work on. Secondly, the two days of snow, much to the happiness of our kids, or at least my kids.
All the kids.
All the kids. That, you know, we were just a little bit later, we like to link these things early in the week or the week before. So, but in terms of the strategic plan, so as you know, we've had a strategic plan in place for several years now. We'll come back yearly or every other year with an update or some changes. And as we look at going forward, North Andover going forward, what is North Andover going to look like in 2022? What is North Andover going to look like in 2025? What are the values of our community? What are our aspirations, what are our expectations? What kind of experiences do we want our kids to have experiential? As well as what kind of instruction do we want them to receive in class? And all these different things. So when you put all this together, you look at approximately three objectives and eleven initiatives. And the objectives, we've slightly adjusted the name and a couple of them to better represent our beliefs, our values, where we think we're heading and how some of the initiatives have changed. Additionally, some of the initiatives have stayed the same. And what you've seen is radical changes in not the initiative itself, but in the action steps, who's responsible and some of the additional work that we have to do in those areas that we may have tackled really well originally and accomplished some great actions, but there's still quite a bit of work to do. And an example of that you'll see later is human resources. We've made some really great progress in the years past in human resources, but there's also still work to do and that's why we have the same initiative. So without further ado, we are going to highlight a few of these areas. So just to take you through it, in this document for the folks at home, we actually have a bigger document and it continues to grow. And I would say that, interestingly enough, in my... They really like the one-page, they like having three objectives, they love having 10, 11, 12 initiatives, and then the actions, the outputs, and the other piece. So, we're pretty excited about it, and the cat, the objectives are three. It was all students, it's equity for all students. Merco was in this year, and we talked about going beyond access when we had that opening day. It's not just enough to provide access to, or access to an excellent education, we have to go beyond that and meet kids where they are, because some kids need a little more help to get that. Consistent and rigorous curriculum, I think speaks for itself, and then really targeted professional practice. What are we learning from the surveys that we do with staff all the time? What are their needs? How do we meet them? And how do we differentiate that? So, pretty excited about that. As in the past, we're not going to go through all three objectives tonight, all 11 initiatives, and then probably close to 100 action steps, who's responsible, et cetera, but we will be highlighting some of the key components, particularly some of the newer ones and some of the bigger changes, and we're going to start off with all students, so.
So, I just, for me, as far as focusing on those first two, reviewing all district special education programs and looking at the model of the 504 in my now five-month tenure, I, that is what I have spent the majority of time doing. So, I feel great about the amount of time I've been able to collaborate on the building base level and be in the schools with the special education coordinators and the principals. So, you know, the, initially I was spending a lot of the time in evaluating the programs, but I have, you know, more recently been able to expand out and really looking at just our, even our inclusion model and what we're looking at for all students. So, we've implemented on the heels of what the other directors were doing, doing learning walks with, some with principals, but with the special education coordinators to get into a classroom. Today, I was lucky enough to be in an integrated class, a couple of the integrated classrooms at the preschool, which is the most fun place to be most of the time.
Do they tell Marcy?
Most of the time. And it was great, you know, I, I think, you know, for me coming in, in the concentration, when I think when we all think of special education, we think of the programs, but just to be in the classrooms and see the great things that are going on with the classrooms for all students. I talked about this in my interview process, but my philosophy about, about special education is that all students deserve a special education. So, when we think about how we're addressing our students, I think, just like, you know, you learn a lot from just watching all students interact, I think we, as special educators, can share a lot of good information that will benefit all students. So, we don't have to, we're not looking at it through the eyes of servicing our kids and your kids, it's how we're servicing kids. So, through looking at some, doing some additional trainings, some of the things that we've talked about, and I think I may have mentioned this before, is that we've, I have an ongoing meeting with the school psychologist, and we've talked about having them have office hours. So, just open time for any teacher to really go into their office with either a problem of practice, or a student need, or a student question, come in with an I E P, come in with a 504, just to do, just to have that connection with general education. So, the more we can work as a team in looking at these initiatives, the better results we're going to have. So, I feel really good about some of the, a lot of the PD that's been going on around SEL and anxiety, and I think, you know, everyone's wanting it and really responding well to it. We're working on getting Michael Joyce in here, who is part of our, did some initial PD for us for administrators at the beginning of the year, but he also does a, a great 504 PD, legal PD, so we're looking to schedule that for the middle school and high school as well. So, some good things in, in the works, reviewing program needs and making what's happening better and starting some new projects, too, so.
Marcy, I've been impressed you've hit the run and running. I think one of the things that came up in my entry plan, which we, you know, I, we did a lot of review thinking about this, because that was 1,136 people, all the information we, including teachers, administrators. One of the biggest areas that stood out besides I E Ps was that 504 area. And, you know, part of hiring you is being a director of 504s in a previous district and, and running that. It's not just about the documentation and all that. I, I think we're, I'm really excited about the work moving forward of not only documentation that's consistent, but implementation that's consistent across all levels. And so, I'm excited for that work, and I appreciate you spearheading it.
And I met with the elementary, actually, the elementary counselors. We met somewhat on looking at just a new way to enter our 504s, but as a result, had some really fruitful conversations about just the great work that they're able to do and being able to collaborate with one another about strategies. So, I'm, you know, they're, everyone, as far as interactions that I have had, is, they're wanting more information, so it's been great.
Great. And as we go through, just if you could highlight what initiative for everyone here and the folks at home who have linked on.
It'd probably help more, too. Is that it on initiative? No, okay. So, I'm, I'm seeing, we're still on initiative one, actually. So, improving programming to address students' variable needs with focus on increasing opportunities for all students. So, we are in the process of evaluating our E L programs. The laws around E L service delivery changed about a year and a half ago, and so we are trying to look at that and make some changes in terms of how we are servicing our E L population in order to see more growth with those students. So, that is another piece. And then we're also, right now, we are potentially investigating a course for, when we heard the MCAS results, we talked about in particular our Latinx population that has not been achieving at the rate that we, we would consider that we are providing them what they need. So, we are talking to, there's a program in Lawrence, Salem State works with them, so, based on something similar to 100 men to college, so we are investigating that and seeing if we can look at something at our high school. And it may not be restricted to, you know, Latinx students, but something for our students who we're feeling are a little underserved. So, had some great conversations with the woman at Salem, I have a contact up at NECO, so it's kind of exciting to see what we might be able to do there. So, when Greg mentioned that we're looking at, so we, we actually changed the wording on this initiative, it used, the ending used to be for inclusion of students, and now we're focusing on all students, so we've broadened that a little bit.
I really like, I'm just gonna, I mean, obviously having the data that's there, right, but, you know, being able to target a specific group of students like that, I think is really key. I think that's a, a credit to you and, and your team, you know, of, of trying to solve the problem, but, you know, now we know exactly kind of where it is and, and all of that, so, that's great.
It's exciting for us as well, so.
And I would just add the last component, which was my category, is develop college and business partnerships at the end, okay? So, one of the things we've talked about, and we'll be eagerly awaiting with, made it Brett, the N I S report sometime later this spring, and as you know, this doesn't all time up, things can't happen all at once overnight, but I wouldn't be surprised if part of the recommendations is looking at the schedule. And it's not necessarily a change in the trimester, for quarters of the classes, but one of the components of a real benefit at North Andover High School is the rolling schedule, because now you have kids who aren't dead asleep for the first period of the day, or, you know, probably more awake than they are in Andover and some of the other places who stop much earlier. But how do we then get opportunities for kids to do things with a rotating schedule in terms of dual enrollment? So, we've long worked with Northern Essex about kids taking coursework there. I'm on the Board of Social Justice and Education of Merrimack College. We've long time had, I don't, can't find it written anywhere, but if we wanted a kid to take a course and they had a seat that let us take, have a kid take a course during the school day up there. So, with the rotating schedule, that's tough, so I would imagine part of the recommendations may be, still may be rotations, but they may have a set block and stone that's static that will allow then for us to do things, you know? The rumor has it that Amazon may be moving here. You know, I may ask them to say, do we have a, a room, a community room, or a school room that we could be used, you know, for our 18 to 22, for our TOPS kids? Currently, they're over at the Cormier Youth Center in Andover, and like, that program is thriving. If you haven't been to a unified basketball game, if you haven't been over to the top floor of the Andover Punchit High School, if you haven't seen these things with our kids and Andover kids, it's a model for the state. And to expand upon that and have other opportunities, because remember, when you're 18 years old, you don't want to stay in the high school that you just completed. So, that's pretty exciting. I'd say the last thing, and I haven't told anyone this yet, but a few years back...
You're telling everybody right now.
Well, it's a really great thing, because it goes into this TOPS program. A few years back, I talked to a mom, and it really resonated with me, and the unified basketball got me thinking about this again. When kids turn 22, that's their last day of school. Like, 22 is it, I mean...
Day before.
The day, well, the day before. So, like, they're going along with their regular life, the only thing they know, and then all of a sudden, it's done. The world of adult care, or depending on, you know, the needs. So, one of the things that, that I propose we do here, Ryan Burr just got me all their dates of when they age out, is I'd like to hold a small ceremony here. If I'm available, and if you guys, I'll let you know, it's not a big thing, but I'd love for the kids to be able to come in with their parents. I got a few extra gowns on the back of my door that have been building up from graduations over time, and, you know, I don't know what it's going to look like, but it'll take 10 minutes. And I think it's just a way to recognize their completion of 22 years, and it's not something that I can find any district doing, and I think it's the right thing to do. So, that's kind of one of the new things tied into the 18 to 22. So, thank you.
Initiative two.
So, is me? Initiative two?
There's, you and Jim had things you were going to talk about.
Yeah, so on the second page, Jim, you have one first.
Jim, you were the last block.
The last block on initiative one?
Under initiative two.
Initiative two.
Okay, so I get the first one, the top block on the second page. We talked about this. Initiative two, second page, top block, is talking about creating, we talked, we had some discussion around, you know, what kind of committee, what kind of group should we have, look at it. I think it should probably be a superintendent's advisory committee to explore the short-term and long-term class reduction options for middle school and elementary. And what we propose is, for actions and outputs, is, you know, create a committee, have a timeline with deliverables, and present the options. And it's certainly going to involve more than the folks listed. Those folks were kind of just focused on being available and would like to have a report prior to, you know, early spring, mid, mid-spring, so, you know, the date we can work on, but that is also relevant and ties into Jim's action, so.
So, we've talked about this, especially at the last meeting that we talked about, that we're kind of forward with a, a multi-year plan that ties to the strategic plan and the upcoming budgets, that, in the identified needs that we have in the district, a plan to, over the next three, four, or five years, meet those needs. And, and this just talks about how we're going to build support for that and continue to advocate for the needs of our students.
Do you have a sense of the makeup of this committee that you're...
Like, teachers?
Uh, this, well, the initial committee, I think it's to explore some options, I think. You know, I think that's something we can certainly discuss, we can discuss with the leadership team, we can discuss it here at the school committee. I think two things are important. I think one, transparency is really critical. I think the committee's role, or people that may be available, and whether it's teachers, whether we have a makeup of a parent, I think we want to develop a couple different ideas, and then I, you know, I think it would be important for us to be able to get together to then bounce those ideas off, whether it's focus groups, whether it's PTOs, you know, all the different stakeholders. They can certainly, because these, these options are not necessarily going to be ones that any of us endorse, we're just producing them. So, I do think oftentimes parents can have a unique perspective, and I think maybe a parent from each level might be a really good idea to put on this subcommittee.
You still don't want to make it too unwieldy?
What'd you say?
You don't want to make it too unwieldy, though?
No, we want to actually just get in, do the work, come up with some options. We have a lot of ideas, and we also want to be able to give the warning of, like, you know, we're create, we're looking at every option, short-term and long-term. And as I mentioned before, and I've spoke to the middle school principal, I mean, the middle school is packed. It's packed. They have a three-person team, I'd really be interested in adding a fourth teacher in the budget next year to make that three-person team a four-person team. But we're, I mean, it would probably significantly displace a program, and, and that's the internal struggle we're going back and forth with right now. So, we want to be nimble and get what options are. I think once we present them to a larger group, or whoever the folks involved, focus groups, stakeholders, whoever they could be, I think they're going to have a lot of feedback on options like that and come up with additional components.
Yeah, I think that's the better way to, I mean, it's your, it's your call, obviously, but having, having a, a committee made up of, you know, your team, your staff, to come up with those options that are then vetted and discussed and torn apart and built up by parents, teachers, would be, you know, I think a better way to do it, but...
Like you said, focus groups to get input and all that.
Well, when, when we're done and present something, because what we want to do is, I was part of redistricting with over 41 meetings, that Jim Marini headed up with Stan Limpert, and what I would say is this, we want to take the emotion out of it, you know, so, much like, and similar when KBA came in, what did they come up, five or six different options for the Bradstreet School? Or maybe it was five to start and whittled to three and gone down, but we want to look at every option, there's not going to be a bad option, and it doesn't mean we're endorsing them. But as I mentioned before, I'm not saying this would happen, so no one on TV take this as writing it down anywhere, but we're going to look at things like, oh, what would it look like if we moved the eighth grade to the high school? What would it look if in facilities master plan two, we expanded elementary schools and we could add 25 classes or 24 classrooms there? What does it look, and maybe the sixth grade goes at a particular school? What would it look, I mean, there's a whole host of options, it doesn't mean that we're going to advocate or support those. We want to make sure that the public knows that we have looked at every single option possible, also while pursuing the expansion of the middle school, which is greatly needed, because I think that we just have to be prepared, whether MSBA comes through or not, whether the funding from the community comes through or not. If we get to a point in this community where in a facilities master plan, there's a middle school and three or four elementary schools, like, are there going to be tough decisions to make? And do we have that information to be able to say, like, we have looked at X, Y, and Z? Because I think this is something that's gone on a long time, as I may have told you over Thanksgiving, or maybe before Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
I told you about the...
I think the...
Well, no, I, I was reading a transcript from the Historical Society, Merrimack transcribed from a student whose mother graduated from Lawrence Evening School in 1922, and she went to Johnson High School. She went on to Stanford, and her husband became the Assistant Director of War, I think, at the time was the title. And it was interesting, she was talking about the bond for the new high school. So, in 1952, her senior year, she was talking about Elvige Hayes, the principal of the school, making a video of showing how tight the classrooms are. I mean, the hallways are during passing time. They had interviews from kids about, you know, what the school looked like, and believe it or not, they, I think they got a really good turnout, it did pass, but back then, all the votes were on Saturday, which I find interesting.
So, they did that to advocate to build?
They just wanted to provide information. So, in today's day and age, like, we want to be able to provide information so that we're just prepared and better educated to say, like, we've looked at this, we're not spending money frivolously, we have space needs, everyone knows it, but we're going to look at every option possible. And it doesn't mean we necessarily want to advocate for what is the cheapest, you know, you want to advocate for what is the best that's educationally sound and, and doable financially.
But I just think to get, to get those options, you need to take the emotion out of it, and we just want the hard, you know, facts of each option.
We can do that.
So, the progression is... Figure out the best options to meet the student needs, figure out what that means for space and capital costs, and then understand that that means there will be operating budget impacts in order to fill those positions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Initiative three, moving on?
Is there anything on three guys?
I, I just, the PD, which I touched upon a little bit, talked about providing PD to all teachers, I, you know, I was lucky enough to come into a, a structure already in place by Loreen, Chris and Ando and Kara. So, it was, it was, I sort of fell into the structure, which was great, but what that's, for the elementary school particularly, what that's allowed us to do is have quite a bit of SEL instruction on top of the academic, the... But what that's, for the elementary school particularly, what that's allowed us to do is have quite a bit of SEL instruction on top of the academic, the STE Math and science curriculum, mystery science curriculum that they've been doing. So, and that's provided by our own experts. You know, I talk a lot about our experts that we bring in. We're great to have. We have Alan Bloom. We have from, about IEPs, we have Linda Gross from Landmark, we talked about Michael Joyce. So we have some great experts from the outside, but we don't wanna, we don't want to discount our experts on the inside. So our BCBA's and Nikki Murphy, the Social Emotional Learning Director, have done some great PD on what specific building-based needs are. So if they report that some of the struggles they're having are dealing, you know, having some plans in place for students that are, have significant anxiety in the classroom, that's what their PD is about on those two-hour days. So I think it's a rotating PD schedule, so it allows for them to get into all the buildings. And I would say they've gone in, they have been able, with the two-hour schedule, to get into all the buildings, to do some social-emotional PD for everyone at this point, so that's been great. Yeah. Middle school, high school, their structure is a little bit different, but again, they've benefited from those same personnel.
Great. Anyone else in four? Excuse me, three?
So initiative four is a new initiative. It's the only initiative that is new. And it falls under, of course, the Equity for All Students, and the initiative is to commit to a culture that reflects, respects, and embraces the voices, perspectives, and differences arising from our diverse community. So I'll just touch on a couple of the action items. One of the things that we did differently this year and are gonna do again differently in January is to have a keynote speaker that focuses on some of these issues. So we had Merco Chardon in in August. Some of us had heard him speak last year and were really impressed with what he had to say. We did some things differently. The feedback from him was really phenomenal on all kinds of levels from our teachers this year. From those who, you know, could have been as simple as, wow, I never thought of it, thought of things this way, to, wow, I need to do something different in my classroom. So there were lots of different kind of reactions to that. We have another full-day PD in January, and we have Dr. Kim Parker coming to speak that day for all of our staff. You're all invited. Welcome to come. And part of that was based on a survey that we did, we sent out, I guess, probably early November. The curriculum team had met. We came up with a series of questions for both the secondary level and the elementary level on just their, again, kind of reflections on what Merco had to say and what they felt they needed to know more about, which was really great. In fact, we have a high school teacher who's working on a graduate-level project, and he used the survey for part of that as well. So it was really, it was a great experience for all of us. And our high school principal has also taken that information and used that with his staff, so it's crossed a number of kind of boundaries at this point, which is cool. So we focused on those things. We've also established an equity squad, which we, we had started to do last year after some of us went to the the equity training, and then last spring got busy, and so we didn't have as many meetings in the spring. But we have met again this year, and we as a group are going to be doing an anti-bias training that we have also offered voluntarily to some staff as PD after school. So our team will be doing that. So, and I guess that just ties in with, you see that, that we do have that voluntary piece as well. So just starting to look at that, looking at some more culturally responsive teaching and curriculum. So talked about our classroom libraries that are much more diverse. We've talked about going into the middle school and high school English ELA classes and providing some more diversity, some books that are more reflective of some of our students, so. And it's, the teachers have been working hard. It's making progress.
Recruitment for educators who look like our students, students succeed?
Yeah, it's under a different goal, but it is something.
Okay, so that's not here, that's in professional development or?
Professional practice, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Consistent rigorous curriculum, professional development. I mean, it is a goal of ours. It's been a goal to hire, recruit, retain people that are more representative of the students in which we have the privilege to serve. And there are challenges associated with that in the region. There's challenges for a whole host of reasons. But we need an active campaign to do so. And I think it's time to kick that off and go at it full throttle.
Thank you. There are a few other things to do.
So some of our teachers or, and our administrators, after hearing Merco, have made some changes to some of the notices that they send out to parents. Erin O'Laughlin, who was our interim principal at Atkinson, held a multicultural night, which was huge attendance at that, really big success. We have our RACAMD work. We're looking at some more family-friendly procedures in our schools. One thing, just starting with our registration process. And some of this came out of my own participation in the SEI for Administrators class in reading some of the articles that we had to read there. So we are looking at, we're gonna start in K through five, having a central registration and being able to provide some more information and get some more information from parents to really help our students move into the schools more comfortably. And six through twelve, they really do more of the registrations at the schools right now because of the course piece, but there's been a lot more connection. Recently, our middle school and high school work together notified me. We had some students who were trying to enroll, but then we didn't hear from them, tried to enroll again, didn't hear from them. So they called me, got involved. Everybody helped out from Deb Conti at the high school calling a few times, myself leaving messages. There's a young man who is really serving as the head of the family right now for some younger siblings, and he is mere twenty-one years old. So it's a great deal of responsibility, but those kids just started at the high school this week. So, and they're from a different country, and it's been quite a move for them. But everybody really starting to talk and work together around this to making, to make sure that we get these kids into school, we get these kids what they need. If there are services that need to be provided, that we do that. So we're looking at that whole registration piece as another piece of that. And just one last little thing, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but that we're looking at is we are investigating the seal of biliteracy as part of the high school graduation piece. That is something that's now offered in the state. And it is, if you show proficiency in English, the English language, as well as another language, and it can be a language that you've studied at school. It could be a native language for you, or it can be a heritage language. So that's something that we have a team working on right now, and we're looking to be able to offer here as well. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
Welcome.
All right, consistent rigorous curriculum. We have one more in red? No, we're done in red.
Purple.
Purple, and that's in one. Lorene, I think you only had one quick highlight there.
I'll make this quick, because it ties with a lot of other things we've talked about. But we do have a five-year curriculum plan. The curriculum team is in the process of updating that now, adding on some new years. Lots of conversation, because it requires a lot of training for teachers. It requires a financial output in terms of materials and all of that. But right now, you know that we are having the ST Math in all schools, so that's really exciting. Next school committee meeting, you will see ST Math in action over at the Kittredge School on December nineteenth. And we do have our K through two reading workshop going, so, and that's going very well. There's a lot of PD during the day. It's not sort of the after-school or after-hours PD happening around that, so. And the rest of, the rest of what's on there are pieces that you've all heard about already, so I'm not gonna go through all of those.
Initiative two is, I'm just gonna highlight the first box there. We have started working on a new data collection system last year, so we're working with Paul Menudi. And we are hoping to unveil later on in the spring, a data studio. So this can wrap in all kinds of information from our informal assessment information to our MAP assessment, our MCAS assessment. It's really pretty exciting. We've done, we've used little pieces of it right now with some of our literacy instruction in the primary level. So it shared some of that with the teachers, but it's a pretty exciting project, and we'll be able to share that with you in the spring.
I do want to recognize Chris Hoddle. He was the first one to create the NASAP, the Northern Student Achievement Profile, that anyone in the region to collect data long-term. Unfortunately, we developed ourselves, because we didn't have a lot of money to develop it. And when the bugs started going, we couldn't keep up with it. We tried to transfer it over to Google, and we've had some success. So we've been tracking a lot of stuff in Google so that we can, you know, this is really important information for teachers. So I really applaud those efforts to create a new dashboard for teachers to be able to use, quickly, efficiently, put the information in, because it's never really been that quick or efficient. So, awesome.
And a lot of local districts are working with him as well. So we've been able to attend meetings, get information from them. Some of them have input different kinds of data. You can input social-emotional data, so it's really pretty exciting, and we're all learning from one another, which is also pretty cool, so.
So does, that helps you serve individual children, students, right? But does it also allow you, on a certain level, to look at the new programs we've put in place and assess whether or not it's working or we need to tweak?
Right, or where it's not working, or where it's doing really well, and we want to make sure we keep moving in that direction.
Right, so that, all that sort of thing, this will help with that.
Dashboards, I mean, teachers can look and they can say, oh, how did they do from the year before? But more importantly, they can see how they're doing in other classes. They can see how, it's live data, that's not static, that it's easy to put in, and then it can inform like, oh, yeah, they were really terrible in this concept last year. All right, three, initiative three.
Just highlight a couple of things. We have continued fostering the relationship with the Stevens Memorial Library. I know in the last newsletter, we had a little piece on the independent reading course at the high school, so that's new, done in conjunction with the library. It's been awesome. The photos were actually something that Dr. Kim Parker, who I said is gonna speak in January, said, showed us their shelfies, so it's like the bookshelf. If you saw, if you saw those in the newsletter, and these are, these are students who may not have been readers before. So really introducing them to different genres of reading, asking them to kind of think about what genre and experience a genre that they have not experienced before. Also setting goals around their reading, which is something we do with the younger students, and our older students haven't had that experience. But what do I want to achieve? What do I want to learn? What do I feel that I'm not good at when I'm reading? And it has been, it has been so exciting to watch the kids and hear the feedback from the teachers on the number of books and the kinds of books and the eye-opening experiences that these kids have had. So it's really been a great collaboration. I went over for the first class at Charlotte, who is one of the librarians over at Stevens, came with a suitcase full of books. And we've had guest readers come in, and they do what's called first read. So I've been a first read guest reader, so you pick a book that you really like, and you read the first chapter, part of the first chapter to the kids to try to get them interested, and you talk about your own passion about reading, which I used to do with the kids at Thompson all the time, too. But, so it's really been cool. It's been, the Stevens collaboration is really, it just continues to grow and has been really exciting. Another thing that we have going on is we've always had some health education in the schools, but we have all ninth graders now receiving their CPR certification, which I think is fabulous.
No, I'm saying this is the real deal. You can, and they can actually get the, you know, it's, they get it for free at school. It's part of our programming. There is a small cost that they actually want to get the card if they're gonna become a lifeguard, et cetera. It might be five bucks or something, but it's pretty awesome.
That hands only CPR in sixth grade. Choking Charlie, we've had at the elementary levels. But, and, you know, we all heard stories. We had a situation at Thompson where it, choking Charlie came into effect and, you know, helped, really helped the situation. So it's important stuff for the kids to learn.
Who was turning blue because the kids recognized it. Amin's brother. No, Amin's brother was the one saved.
It was Liam, wasn't it? Who used to come here, yeah.
He gave the sign. A friend recognized it, told Mrs. Lee. Someone else recognized the sign, ran and got the nurse. She gave the Heimlich and, uh.
Whacked him in the back with a hard.
No, the real thing. I think it, I think it was a.
We're not supposed to call it Heimlich anymore. There's a new, there's a different term, because Dr. Heimlich didn't like it being called after him.
I don't know what the new term is.
I don't remember either.
But they, that, it was unbelievable.
It's a quiz for next week. Pluto, not there.
All right, and four, please.
That's a technology, somebody was gonna.
And four. The, you know, one of the things, one of the things talking with Mr. Grant about four. You know, I know people were interested in saying, I think we've got to the technology point where we can kind of sunset this. Believe it or not, the ongoing work is remarkable that takes place. So for example, we used to have a school community member would say, let's turn up the dial so we have more bandwidth, so it's faster, right? Well, we turned up the dial this year four times what it was last June, and for the first three, four weeks of school, we were like, what the heck's happening here? So we worked really closely with the town to figure out, you know, the police added cameras across the community, you know, it's different locations. The middle school had some, a small amount of cameras added in. You know, so when you had different things, then we thought it was the cameras, you know, and it turned out to be a few different things. So it took some honing, it took some work.
Every middle school practically kid has a phone. Mine does not, but.
Yeah, and, you know, and so the support for the network infrastructure is always ongoing. I'm really pleased with where we are with Chromebooks. I mean, the numbers are staggering. I said to the PTO presidents this morning, in twenty-twelve, at Thompson School, I could not cobble together twenty-two working Chromebooks, or twenty-two working computers. They were MacBook chunky white ones then. And now, grades one through eight, it's one point three students per device. And they vary a little bit. You know, I think Kittredge is at one point one-nine, Atkinson is second at one point eight-something, and then it's Thompson is third at, you know, one point three, Franklin at one point three-four, and then Sergeant's a little over one-five. But for us, and then at the middle school, so for us to be able to get there, like, it's remarkable. And so when we say we have them, please just know that we'll continue to, there's some at the end of their lives. So we'll get those, we'll take them out, we'll keep an eye on equity, which is always important. And, you know, Mike will continue this work.
We were kind of bogged down because we were so adamant that we were going to have a certain, a specific device, the MacBooks. And once we were convinced that the Chromebooks would do what we need them to do, and cost, you know, we could get three or four of those for the price. That's why we're, now, we were able to do this.
You know, because districts were going one-to-one. They were going, what are they, iPads? I don't remember what an iPad is, because I don't have one anymore. The ability, though, for us to say, oh, we're gonna buy ten Chromebooks and put them at Woodridge in the rec center. Oh, we're gonna buy Chromebooks and put them at the library. You know, the ability to deploy these devices with other agencies in the community make a huge difference. All right, targeted professional practice. Let's see. Jimmy, you just want to talk briefly about the work you've done, because it all kind of here ties together.
Yeah, I'm excited about where this one went. This one started out, if you recall, the high school had done a adjustment at the, kind of the department heads, going back to department heads, so that leadership structure. And we were going to do that for the middle school and elementary, and we've gotten them together. But it's kind of grown into not just a focus on leadership, but a focus on what does, what do the schools need regarding supports, leadership, resources, in order to meet the needs of the students? And so that's what you're going to see when we present the five-year budget plan as a result of those discussions, where it's understood that each school is unique and has its own culture, and that should be celebrated. But also each school should have, and it could be shared resources across the district, but each school should have all of those resources and supports to meet the identified needs of the students.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Over on two. And it looks like targeted professional practice. Lorene, I know you, I think you picked one to highlight here.
Both administrators and in groups of teachers to look at data, the SEI, EL courses that we're offering. I've shared with you in the past, we started doing fall, spring, and summer PD, so all of that continues. The SEL PD that Marcy talked about, so much of that is a continuation. On the last, the last piece on that is we are looking to expand and revise our mentoring program, so that's something we're working on this year. So that's a little bit different.
Great, thanks, Lorene.
Yep.
Do you have a sense with all of this professional zone that you all provide?
Do people still have to go out, teachers still have to go out on their own and do extensive, to keep their licenses up? Or does this cover a lot of that?
This covers a lot of it, if they, if they choose to take part in it, yeah.
Some of the specialists, you know, they still, just because they're so.
The low incidence kind of, yeah.
They are the ones who are predominantly asking. But we. They are the ones who are predominantly asking, but we, like, we're trying to do like some little special things for, like, for instance, our new special education teachers did a training with Yoda King, first and second year teachers, so some additional stuff for some added areas, but in general, I think they're well covered.
And when folks do go out, they can go to CEN, they can go to.
Right.
So.
And we ask them to, and we have an opportunity for them to share back, yeah.
So I guess, like, the reason why I ask is.
They see that as a benefit to teaching here, I would hope that.
I, I would say that this is one of the most remarkable turnarounds we've had in this district. This is remarkable in the sense of, you know, we have had, I remember, oh, about ten years ago, and this is no, it's, it's just what most districts were. If there was a math, math initiative in an elementary school, it doesn't matter if you were in Andover, North Andover, Lawrence, like, oftentimes everyone in elementary would go to the PD for math, even if you taught music. And I think when we started to differentiate, we started to see some success, it was complicated, the schedule gets complicated, trying to fit everyone in, it's tedious and it's a lot of work. But just like there's not one lesson that meets the needs of all kids, like, this, we have to differentiate because people are at different spots in their career, they have different needs, so if you have to recertify needing one hundred and fifty PDPs, which is one of the standards that the majority of our teachers have, and one hundred and twenty are in the content area, you need fifteen in EL, you need fifteen in special education. So we have an online course for the EL and the special education. The ability to earn PDPs through the curriculum mapping groups that we've been hosting here, the ability to earn PDPs through CEN, through the courses, through the bias course, through the in-service university credits we give here from North Andover that's in quite two large amounts of PDPs. No one should have to go out and spend any money in order to re-certify. And pen, the low incidence, special education, art, music, PE, that, it wasn't an election day this year, I had to tell George to change his election day sign, voting day, because it was voting day in Haverhill, George is from Haverhill. It was the day that we had the PD, but it wasn't the voting, but it caused a few people to show up at the high school to vote. For the primary, they said, the primary, so, pretty awesome, so.
I remember just being here the last two years, it went from like zero to all this, it's kind of amazing.
Is that two, Massachusetts two? And last, three?
About the recruitment of staff that's representative of students. So our HR director, Greg Landry, not surprising to any who know him prior to coming on as HR director, he's jumped right in and has done an excellent job, not much has changed in the action items, but what he's done is, is put a focus on them and also put a focus on being responsive to our employees and making sure that they know what's available to them. He's been proactive and reactive in communication and really establishing HR as a support for our employees and, in addition to these action items.
And I think, one thing I want to point out, though, it's important because when you look, you look at Massachusetts, this is a problem people struggle with in a lot of communities and communities that have changed and different populations live in different areas, but there's a lot of research around what's the best way to do this. And I think the first step that we've taken that maybe not a lot of people know is we have, oftentimes those MTEL tests can be difficult, the communications literacy, some of the things where English is not your first language. I'm proud to say that we've been hiring particularly some really terrific teaching assistants more recently who are fluent in Spanish, they're fluent in Portuguese, they're fluent in Arabic, in some of the different languages, and that makes a huge difference just to have different folks be able to do that, so. The more we can do that, the more we can put folks in front of our students that look like our students and representative of that is awesome. So I think our ability now to now start networking with the colleges, we need that pipeline and we also have to think internally about how do we create a pipeline from teaching assistant to the proper educational degree to come and work for us, so.
So, so again, I'm just going to mention Crest because we were given an update, right? That's one of the focuses that Crest has figured out is that there are a lot of people who would like to be teachers who are having trouble with the MTEL, either the English or the math, it's really a challenge for people who want to teach elementary school to pass the math sometimes. So they're providing, or they're looking at providing opportunities for learning groups to help, to, to prepare.
And the MTEL, I should say, is not just a challenge for folks who English may not be their first language, it's a challenge for lots of folks. And there is no waiver, there are no, there's no way around the mass general law of passing those tests to be a teacher, so. So, you know, really in conclusion, I, I, I'm really excited about this, I think that, you know, in this we look at, I think, I think over, over time we've had a really, we've had a great place for many or a majority of our students to learn. I think this is starting to even take us to a level of how do we get to a great place for, it's a great education for all of our kids? How do they have all these hands-on type of experiences, how do they have, like, for example, at PTO this morning, they were talking about some of the travel things that change people's lives, you know, and more importantly, how do we create, whether it's through the master plan, capital plans, how do we create the best spaces for teachers to teach and have space for that, for kids to learn? And how do we arm teachers with the PD materials and the space to do what they do best? And we think this is a step and a change in a lot of the actions in the right direction, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan, I'm really impressed with the work, and thank you to Dr. Mealy, Ms. Marks, Ms. Kucy, for your presentation. Lot to be, lot to do, but a lot to be proud of.
Any other questions from the members?
I know we asked some questions along with that.
I'd just be remiss, I, you mentioned these guys and they're awesome, like, the best of the best, but the rest of the leadership team played a big role in this, too.
I know.
And the ability for, we did something very different this year, and I'll just mention it. Well, I've been doing a lot of reading with Harvard Business Review, and we've been doing a lot of practice, protocols of practice and issues and things. But I've also been learning about how to get more voice, so rather than use protocols where some people might not talk, we've been doing a lot of stuff where you get a lot of quiet time with really specific focused questions and people get to write. And that was really beneficial with a lot of the fresh ideas and the new things in here. And I'm so proud of the leadership team and their work with this.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, new business, first reading therapy dog policy.
I'm going to introduce it and let Lorraine talk briefly.
Yep.
So to be really clear, there, and we, unfortunately, I believe on this school committee, we have a animal expert attorney somewhere on the board, or at least I've seen giving presentations at the library, in the news. Anyway, here's the thing, a therapy, so people oftentimes confuse a therapy dog and a service dog, so just to explain this, a therapy dog is very, very different than a service dog. A therapy dog is something that is oftentimes, if it's brought to a school, it's brought for a very specific purpose. It's not tied to a student or an IEP or anything like that. A perfect example is after the gas explosions, Andover had some therapy dogs come into the school system, there's a lot of benefits to having them. A service dog, on the other hand, someone has a specific need, very different than this policy, totally different, that's covered under ADA, that's covered under a whole host of things. They may need a service dog for a whole host of reasons and that would be something they work out with the school in line with all the laws. Interestingly enough, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you cannot have a service squirrel, turkey, cat. The only two animals allowed in schools would be a miniature horse that's been rabies tested and a dog. So those are the only two, a therapy dog, the reason we wanted to put a policy on the books is, what I've noticed is, over the past several years, probably decade, we've had some offshoots of people bringing in a therapy dog for very good reasons. And we've gone around and done some really tremendous work, from Cheryl Bazzak making sure no one's allergic to following, you know, our medical policies and procedures, to following, making sure everything works out, and I think there could be a real benefit. So this policy is simply just putting one on the books and simply that's it. But I do want to say, you know, that I have been approached by the chief of police that has an interest in purchasing a therapy dog for the police department and is someone who we have a memorandum with, that may be beneficial to the, beneficial to the school, it may not, there's a lot to work out with something like that. That wouldn't be involved in this, this just sets the policy, later in the spring, if they were going to do something like that, we'd bring them back to you, would tell you what the practices are, or the procedures in place to comply with the policy, and then we'd look at that. But this is just simply, it's been brought to our attention a few times that we've had these folks in over the years, and I think it's just time to get one on the books because most districts have them on the books. Suzanne Egan could not be here tonight, but she said happily take, will myself or Bev will take any questions, we'll get them answered for the next meeting. Lorraine? Oh, sorry.
So I, I'll just briefly say, therapy dogs, as Greg said, are not servicing animals, they do require a specific certification as a therapy dog, it is different than a service dog. In order for a therapy dog, per the policy that Suzanne is recommending, to come into a school, it has to be obtained through a formal process through the superintendent and the principal of the building, so it's not like they can just come in anytime, there has to be a process, we need to know they're there, we need to see those certifications, the dog would never be alone in the schools, it would always be on leash with their handler. And if they're, they could be excluded from school property if the handler does not have control, if there's any other sort of concerns that we have about the dog. So it's a pretty, I mean, that's pretty much what it covers, it's pretty basic, and as Greg said, it is just to get the policy on the books so if we decide to move forward ever having therapy dogs, or like you said, we've, we've, on occasion, there's been dogs that have come in, I know the high school does a day and they've, I think the past couple of years have had a dog in for that day, whether it was, I don't even know if it was in the nurse's office or where, but just so we have a policy and we're, we're making sure that we're all aware of what's going on, so.
Unique in this policy, that's unique to North Andover?
No.
No, I thought so.
There's several districts that have this in place.
So I don't see anything in here about fear and allergies. For some children, dogs are very terrifying, I mean, I literally walked my dog by the middle school the other day and there were kids screaming and running in the other direction, and we were just walking with a dog on a leash. So what's therapeutic for some can be traumatic for others, so I want to, I want to know if, if that can be addressed in the policy or.
That's probably not per the policy, but we have a lot of other information from schools that have had therapy dogs and how they address issues like that, that more becomes if we get, if we decide that we're going to have a dog here for any purpose, how we would address those issues more like a, kind of, for lack of a better word at the moment, like a handbook that goes around those kind of issues for dogs here in North Andover, this is really just more the generic policy, what are the requirements to even have the dog here? But that's, that is something that we've talked about, I was afraid of dogs when I was a kid, and then I had Siberian huskies that looked like wolves that people were terrified of, so, you know, you, like, it changes, but I, I was very afraid of dogs, so I absolutely understand that, you know? And there are, there are kids who have allergies, there are kids, there are other issues, so it's something we have talked a lot about and we'd be very aware of.
So to be really clear, we'd be looking at, if a therapy dog policy is approved, we would be then looking to develop a plan if we had one with, say, for example, the police department wanted to cooperate, do something with this, we would bring to you what those practices would be based on the policy, so you'd direct us, the leadership team and the superintendent, to develop what are the practices related to the policy. And we would come back and, whether it's a vote of support or it's a vote on actually partnering with the NAPD or anyone else, we would bring it to you first, so.
And maybe those kids are just scared of school group members and they saw you and they got scared of you.
So another, another question that I have, it talks about the handler and the dog has to be certified, but my understanding is that the handlers also need to be
Yes, I, it.
trained and certified.
I think it says it in here, I just didn't, I didn't read every piece of it, yeah, but yeah, it's definitely a certification that goes with the handler and the dog, yeah.
And then my third question is, service dogs are not therapy dogs necessarily. This doesn't talk about emotional support animals and. Okay, good, thank you.
And I would just say that we're very fortunate, did anyone go to wrestling Olympics? Okay, so you saw Sergeant Sandy Picard of the Lawrence Police Department, she's a longtime member of Lawrence Police Department, she was there with her therapy dog. She talked about how oftentimes school districts want to, you know, get a mascot, and like I said to them, you know, it's not a firehouse where we can keep a dog around all day and bring them to lunch, and, so I am, you know, if, once we pass this, if we look into other things, we will set up with the practitioners, the principals, Lorraine, Marcy, the folks who are involved, because probably something, if they're, if we wanted to do something with a therapy dog, which we've been doing probably for the last decade anyway, with these offshoots of one here, one there, we'd want to be able to say, what's the purpose, how long do they come in? And she said, I mean, she has tremendous, I mean, she's been doing it forever, she gave me two certification cards from two different national organizations, I mean, I, I have a wallet full of all her stuff, but she's willing to meet with us, you know, after the new year, too. If we're interested in having a therapy dog, whether with North Andover Police or anyone else, about what that should look like, she does that kind of work. And I'm thankful to her to volunteer her time.
Any other questions on the therapy dog, I mean, this is obviously the first reading we'll vote on in two weeks.
Questions, concerns?
Thanks for the explanation. Next item is first reading overnight trip, student council conference, MASC, we talked a little about this during the student report, yeah.
Or new, it's, and I, it is a really great experience for the kids, and I'm, I'm just going to say, I know that Connor Meehan is the one who submitted this, he does a phenomenal job with the kids, he is innovative, always trying to, to see what he could do that's new. He attended a conference with one of his colleagues last year to help with some of the advisory pieces of the high school, so I think he's doing a really, really great job with this.
Two weeks. Thank you. Oldie but a goodie, budget directives, FY twenty-one. We talked about this a little bit last time, and I think we made a couple, myself and Helen met with Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Mealy about this yesterday. A few small tweaks here, added by Ms. Picard. I had, I think we recall some questions regarding the, the class sizes, as you can see here, does everybody get the enrollment projections, did everybody get this?
These are the current enrollments that you were asking about.
Yeah, yeah, did everybody get that?
There's one there, specifically Mr. McDavid likes one particularly.
Yeah. So after the explanation, I feel, I feel very comfortable keeping this in here as a, as a budget directive for next time. Any other feedback on these budget directives right now? I, this is, I like having this, by the way, this is helpful, seeing the class sizes across the elementary schools, because this is stuff that a lot of people focus on is to have these informations, I think is, is beneficial to all of us.
Yeah, I think, you know, that might be something, too, we, we might just post that currently on the front of the web, I think oftentimes it's interesting. I mean, we haven't capped out twenty-eight in over a year in any classroom, and that was the norm not long ago. But I run into folks and say, you know, this particular, you know, did you know at the Thompson or did you know at the Frank, they have a class of twenty-nine and thirty. You know, so oftentimes, i- it's hard because you hear one thing in this, we're really lucky because we've made some dent in that, we've made a dent in this, and we're backfield nine or so of the fifteen classroom teachers. At the same time, one of the things that last year I mentioned in the budget was really important is, we had to, we minimally added last year a full-time specialist, another special educator, because when we added these classrooms, we created other sections for PER, music. And we just, you know, it's something, too, that's equally as important as the classroom size. The last piece of data that someone asked last time, and I, I should have included this, I can get this in the report, is that one of the things we talked about was percent over, and I had talked a long time about the past year, about, I don't really like this stat. It was a good stat to start, but when you start talking about, like, if a class has one kid over, you know, that really can skew it, so I really like the averages better. But we were at sixteen point eight last year, I thought we could get down to about twelve or eleven point five, we are at fourteen point four.
Can you explain what that is?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think other people at home can see that, really. That's our new technology, by the way.
Yeah, this is it. Don't tell Mr. Grant. Anyway, guys, these guidelines, the school committee recommendations for class size, six, seven years ago were not even something remotely doable at the time. And in fact, when I took over the Thompson School in two thousand eight. And in fact, when I took over the Thompson School in 2008 with 425 kids and a classroom in the library and a classroom in every build possible piece, I had talked to a couple of teachers who had been there two years, who were hired in November, two years prior, because we had classes of 37 and 38.
I had a course later that year.
So what this says, and we've used this in a lot of our presentations over the years, is it goes from 11 to 2020, and it talks about the percent of elementary classrooms over the class size goal. So the elementary class size goal for K to 2 is 18 to 22. So it's 22 K to 2 and it's 25 is the max, three to five. We were in the 50% over in 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. There was a dip, 43% in 17. And then we dropped to 29, 16, and 14 in the last three years. So we've made a big dent in that. We have backfilled classrooms, if you recall, with teachers. But more importantly, when you remove 15, we have some portables at the end of the life. And we also didn't have appropriate spaces in a lot of schools for art, music, P E, a whole host of things. Library. So we're being creative. And I would just say, a big component of this is class size was the number one thing on my entry plan. It's the number one thing people still bring up across the community. I would just say that it's something that we're looking at closely. But we will also continue to be creative, innovative. I think that we will, you know, Mr. McDavid had some really good questions last time about the multi-gauge classroom at Franklin and the ability to the ability of, you know, a teacher to teach first and second grade, combined group of kids that she keeps. And that can alleviate some issues. And we have some interest in some of the other schools. So, you know, once we get a budget with a total FTE approval, we'll be able to work within that. What do we need for the classrooms? But what do we need for specialists? What do we need to address these needs?
Dr. Gilligan, can you just confirm real quick, 15 classrooms at the Brad Street?
15.
Okay.
This year. Right, last year there were 16.
Last year there were 16?
Yep. And I would say, you know, one of the identified needs, you know, and we'll get more into this as we go through the budget season, and for the superintendent to recommend a budget. But we're lucky there were 15 this year. There's an open classroom. That classroom teacher, we turned into a special educator. We have some significant special education needs in terms of programming there. We're fortunate to be able to meet them this year. But I'm excited for Marcy to put together a longer plan, goal, a plan in terms of programming.
So I think for me, the word that really strikes me when I read through this is in the second to last bullet, where it says initiatives to improve progress. You talked earlier about being beyond access. And for a long time, our schools have been in maintenance mode. And I would love to see a budget that takes us beyond maintenance and really targets that improvement. I think that's really important. And I think when we're talking about multi-year budgets and when we're talking about the possibility of Amazon coming to North Andover, the, you know, strong possibility of Amazon coming to North Andover, we should be looking at how we can really start to to push the needle on what we can do to make North Andover Public Schools excellent for all students.
Well, I couldn't, we've had this conversation. So I absolutely agree with you. And I think that all of us, you know, talking to our, you know, colleagues on the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, you know, we need to reiterate that message to them. And I know Dr. Gilligan's having conversations with the town manager on a, you know, weekly basis to, you know, to to meet our needs. We all know, you know, we're not gonna talk, you know, about, we all know what our per people spending average is. We know how poor it is in relation to other communities in the state. We need to do a better job. We need to have, we need to have more resources to meet our needs, no question about it. Helen?
Because in the four years that I've, I guess this is my fourth time going through all this, if there's always the level, what level services, what it's gonna take to do that. And then there's a little tiny bit of money to do some stuff. And it's been that little tiny bit. I think it's been like three to five hundred thousand for my four years, no more than that by any stretch. I don't see how we do some of these fab things with that tiny bit of increments. So I don't know if that means we need. But I mean, it's not just we want more money. We need, as a community, find a way to make the pot bigger. And I mean, Amazon is one place we're trying to hang our hat, but it's gotta be more than that, too.
Well, I think that's why we're talking about having that multi-year, even though we can't tie, you know, next year's scooping, you know, hopefully we'll all be here again next year. But we can't tie, you know, next year's scooping to a budget for next, obviously. But I think what.
Tiny things.
Well, I think, you know, we're hopeful that this budget coming up is gonna have that kind of foresight, be a little more, a little more bold, you know? That's what I like to see at least.
And you said you've been looking at like a long range.
Five years.
Five-year plan, so that's key.
I know that look, he's ready to say something. Teeing it up.
No, I mean, I'm thinking a little bit back to the, you know, the class sizes and, you know, I don't even know, this is maybe my seventh year. You know, we've always kind of looked at exactly what those numbers are. And it's just been like, okay, great. Like, you know, and then we looked at the numbers of, you know, the number of students that were sitting in a classroom and we're like, well, we're over them all, like, you know, we'll try again next year. But, you know, like unless 300 families move out of town, you know, like we're still, you know, exactly where we were. So, you know, to see us drop even down to 14%, right? I mean, it's just absolutely fantastic to kind of hit that. And just kind of was looking, spending a couple of minutes looking over like where there were little pockets. And, you know, it's not, it doesn't seem to me like we're really hitting like this, like massive fourth grade year or second grade, you know, like it's it's little pockets in different schools. And and that's kind of where it is. And certainly people, you know, are not gonna be jumping schools typically because, you know, they're gonna, you know, drop from, you know, 23 down to 21 or something like that. So, I mean, that part is certainly great. But, I mean, I I think we have, just to really echo Mrs. Maybley a little bit, we've talked a lot about, you know, always being somewhat financially responsible in our budget, right? And I I'm gonna continue to kind of push, you know, to be educationally responsible, right? And so, you know, we really need to make sure if, you know, we're gonna accomplish what we need in that strategic plan, which I think is fantastic, you know, i- it's a very small piece of of money in in order to get that done. And, you know, we can't bank our hat on on a business coming in to kind of quote bail us out. And I don't mean to say bail us out, but but really adjust what we're doing. And, I mean, I I don't think we do things frivolously. I don't think that we, you know, I think you look around the central office and, you know, some of the other, you know, districts, you know, that they may have massive staff. I mean, this is a lean office, a very lean office that that really works hard. With that, I don't see us with, you know, a gazillion administrators and things of that nature. I mean, so, you know, I think we put our resources as close to the hands of the students as possible. But now I think we really need to try to to see what we can do to be moving that, so.
Well, I think, you know, you you mentioned putting too much, I forget the exact word you said, but, you know, relying on a business. I mean, our property taxes pay for everything pretty much. I mean, the local aid we get from the state and some some federal aid is de minimis compared to what, you know, our homeowners and our business owners pay. And, you know, those of us who, you knew, we knew what that place was like, you know, 20 years ago, 30 years ago. And it was by far the biggest property tax payer. And we've suffered from that. People don't realize that, and not just the school department, all departments have suffered for that. But I think there's an opportunity here, and we need to, as Helen was mentioning, we need to take that into account when we're budgeting long term of what the impact of that, those property taxes are gonna be. Not not the one-time, you know, fees that are gonna come in, but the long-term stability of having a property owner, a tenant down there, you know, how that impacts us and we get a plan for it. And I think, I think, you know, what I've seen internally, you guys are doing that, so. Look forward to January 9th when we see that budget.
Yeah. I would, I would wanna say this. Look, I I've been around here 22 years, and I've been around here when we cut $3 million in one year. I mean, I can't, I I might have a stroke if I thought about cutting 30,000 now. And we've, you know, seen the ups and downs. We've seen the challenges. We've seen the benefits of working collaboratively with the town. We've seen a whole host of things. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, I've also seen us say, this is a problem. We cut something to get something. And then four years later, we say, oh, my God, we got this big problem over here. Well, no kidding, we got this problem over here. It's great that these scores have gone through the roof, but at the expense of this. You know, and that's the reality. So for me, you know, I'm certainly not an MBA like Dr. Millie. You know, I, you know, I know, this is our community money. And as superintendent, it's really, I think about it as, what are those needs where over the decade, the expectations of what we produce have risen, but also the challenges of the kids we have the privilege to serve have increased greatly in a variety of ways? How do we do that in a way that's sustainable over time, but that moves the needle so that we can start to make this not just a place that's great for many of our kids, but great for all of our kids? And we have to go beyond that access to an excellent education. And there's a lot of work to do in there. And we know, you know, I know these budget directives come out every time, this time of year. But this is something we've been working on. We've been having private interviews with principals. We've had a whole host of different things. We know where those areas are, how we wanna tackle them. And the the needs of kids could be endless, and you could spend endlessly, and some districts do. So I would just say that I think we've been good stewards of the town's money. I think we've made good progress, and I and I hope that we can continue to make progress. I'm encouraged by, you know, the frequent meetings with Melissa Murphy Rodriguez. In fact, I was just on the phone with her tonight, about an hour before the meeting, looking at, you know, all sorts of options of, and how we can get there. Because we we certainly didn't get to where we are overnight. But whether Amazon comes, whether any company comes, the community of North Andover is at a crossroads. We have to make a decision. Do we wanna have an improvement budget that has outcomes and a plan? Or do we wanna have a maintenance budget? And we can, there'll be some hidden gaps in the aggregate that as superintendent of schools, I have to say, I can't sit idly by without saying, this is something we gotta tackle, so.
Can you do us a favor as you start to look to that? So I know that there's some projections in terms of what Amazon may bring in, or whoever, right, may brings it, bring in at 1600. But I remember a couple of years ago talking about Burlington and their per pupil spending was relatively high. And, you know, they certainly have them all. They have a lot of, you know, businesses that are there, and and that's a definite factor for that. But I'd be curious, you know, let's just say, for example, you know, Amazon brought in X million, right? And based upon the formula that we have today, right, we get whatever, probably about 68 or so cents percentage of that, right? Somewhere in there. What does that mean to us from a budget perspective and a per stu- per pupil spending? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I think that, two things. One, as Jim alluded to, an idea of, you know, one of the things FinCom's been asking the schools for, you know, folks in the community, is, you know, some some particular ways that we think is part of the strategic plan with a five-year financial plan and ideas. How would we get there in a way that's responsible? And we have some ideas, but there's a lot of other ways to do it. And the town manager's on board new. And I think that we're looking at, okay, I think that just like we're leaving no stone unturned with the options for the middle school expansion, I think there's an opportunity to say, well, something might come, it might not come. But if it comes, what's the lag time? What's it look like? What may that look like for the schools, police, fire, everyone in terms of those cuts?
I mean, I think that that's part of the five-year projection. And I can't speak tonight, I'm sorry. Five-year projection with Dr. Millie, you know, because we couldn't necessarily start this in, let's say, 2022, 2023, and all of a sudden say, you know, wow, we've got an extra, I don't know, $3 million. Like, woo, great, everybody gets a Chromebook, right? You know, like be like Oprah, you get a Chromebook, you get a. But, you know, the reality of it is, I mean, there has to be, you know, a larger plan, you know, A from the town in terms of, you know, how we're going to work on some, I don't wanna say deficiencies, but investments. And, you know, it may be that, you know, that money doesn't, not all of, you know, the the share kind of comes to the schools as it, you know, but it's it's all part of that piece. And I and I think it's probably the right time to be doing that five-year plan in conjunction with the town manager and and some increase in in business taxes and and investments, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel I feel very confident that that these folks are doing those things. And this is a, you know, one step, you know, town meeting is the ultimate, you know, decision maker. We have a lot of steps to get to before we get to that point. So I feel very good about the direction we're heading. So thank you. Okay, we're just off by five minutes on public comment. Is there public comment? Yes. Mr. Lumper.
We're up by eight.
I know. No, that's fine.
Three minutes.
Stand the 43 Stone Creek Road. Three comments. First is, people, you know, think it's humorous that I come to a lot of meetings, a lot of town meetings. But there's there's no substitute for actually seeing all of you in action. There isn't any way to get that on TV. There's no way to get the feel for what's going on with the people and the staff. We have a wonderful staff at our school district. So you get to see that when you come to these meetings, and I'm very appreciative of being able to do that. The second thing I wanted to say was the comment about technology and Mr. Grant, who of course we all should be infinitely grateful for, who did more than any other single human to change our technology perspective here. It turned out that what, as Mr., as Dr. Millie pointed out, we were hung up on the wrong question, which was hardware. And Mr. Grant approached it from the right perspective, which was software, pre-Google software, right? And once we started down that path, the Chromebooks became the easy decision. Anything else would have been stupid. So he was really the one that got us pointed in the right direction on that. And that's, you know, a tremendous, we owe him a tremendous debt for that because now we have all these wonderful results from that. And I'm, I was sitting here thinking, watching Mr. Dr. Gilligan hold up the, where's our document camera that we have in all the cla-? Why isn't there one here, huh? Where's our document camera hooked up to Dr. Millie's PC so we can show the impromptu? Where is our technology when we need it, right? My third comment is, so we've seen, you know, over your meetings, some wonderful presentations. It would be wonderful, I think, if we could show the intersection of those two, of what we what we heard tonight, a wonderful, I think, well-thought-through strategic plan, far better than it's ever been in the past, as I recall, coupled with the presentations we've now seen about MCAS. Where's the integration of that? Sort of channeling Dr. Ormsby, which was always the plotting the performance, right? So, you know, it would be nice, I think, for the story to sort of show that overlap at some point, just how those two large groups of information sort of come together and how they all, how they complement one another. I think that would just be a helpful thing for the community. And that goes, you know, to the five-year plan, which has to be based on a pretty good story to make that work. I mean, no story, no money. We learned that from our last town manager, and I can't believe our new town manager is gonna be a lot different than that. So you have all the pieces for a great story, you really do. And this is a wonderful strategic plan. This is so so much improved, enhanced from what it has been in the past. I really compliment you on that, so thank you.
So we remember that. Thank you. Okay, coming from the members, anything, Ms. Maybley? You don't have something mandatory?
I've already shared with Dr. Gilligan, I thought I would mention, and I I don't know that it's something that we could do all the time, but those of us who have students who have finals in high school, greatly, at least in my household, greatly benefited from the trimester ending before Thanksgiving. We, as a family, have never had a more spectacular in the last four years, Thanksgiving, because it was over. And usually, you know, Thanksgiving and Saturday, you know, where's your your high school kid? Oh, upstairs studying. Well, we're all going, you know, to do this. Oh, sorry, have to study. And I don't know if there was a lot of burden on the teachers to have to get the grades in. But if there was any way to make it always end before Thanksgiving, I think it just, it doesn't affect the other little kids. It's the high school kids with the finals, massive difference. I just wanted to mention that. Right, oh.
It is something that, you know, as a former high school history teacher and a social science person, that I would have no issue with. But I do know even with one snow day, there are requests from certain disciplines for the trimesters to change and very specific things plotted out, so.
I know it's not an easy thing to pull off based on when we start and all that. But the benefits to, just even just to the high school kids is colossal, are colossal.
Yeah, and I think the teachers liked it. I think everyone liked it. And I, Ms. Maybley, I think you've mentioned it at least four or five times to me.
So you like only one, Grant?
Okay. This is, no, it's awesome. And it's, and it seems to happen, what, about every four years?
Well, yeah, I would imagine, right?
But it's certainly something we can look at. And I'm sure that NEAS will have recommendations around the schedule anyway, so.
It, it will certainly be tricky next year because Labor Day's so late.
Right, it does the opposite.
Yeah, yeah. So to echo Mr. Lempert's statement about being in the room, there's nothing like being in the room. We have missed the high school concerts in December, year after year, because we seem to always have school committee, obviously on Thursday night when they have the concerts.